It's nice to be back at the city hall. We're not quite there, but at least we can start having our meetings here again. We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and a pledge of allegiance. If you would like, please feel free. Ms. Isby, could I get you the word of prayer, please, ma'am?
Sure. If you'll bow with me, our gracious heavenly father, we thank you for all the abundant blessings that you've given us. We just thank you, Lord, for this city that you've blessed us with, and we just ask, Lord, that everything that we say and do tonight glorifies you and that you get the honor that you so deserve. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Now call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please, sir?
Mr. Hawkins.
Welcome back, Mr. Garrett. Here.
Mr. Grimes, here. Mr. Cummins, Ms. Mel, here. Mr. Jones, here. Ms. Isby, here.
Okay, you should have received minutes from the January 23rd, 2024 city council meeting. Any corrections, changes, or comments?
Make a motion for approval as submitted. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. No, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a seven to zero. Okay, first up, we have a public hearing for a proposed water system rate adjustment for Conway Corporation. We'll now declare this public hearing open, public meeting open. We will open with anyone who would like to speak in favor of this. We'll give you 10 minutes to speak. Anyone after you, three minutes, and then we will open the floor to anyone who is opposed to this and let them speak. If you would, when you approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Aaron Brown, Chief Financial Officer at Conway Corp., 650 Locust here in Conway. I would like to speak in favor of this rate recommendation. I'll show you this presentation here. So as part of this rate process that we went through, we went through the different rate setting principles. We believe that they should be cost-based and equitable, meet the full revenue requirements of the utility, which includes operation and maintenance expense, capital expenditures, debt service, and cash reserves. Should be easy to understand and administer. They're generally accepted techniques and stable in providing adequate revenues to meet all of our financial requirements. Factors driving the need for this adjustment. Our last rate proposal that we brought was 2016. We have had inflationary cost increases that have been unexpected over the past few years that I know everyone has been feeling. Our 2024 budgeted operations and maintenance expenses are up 35% compared to 2019. At the time that we brought that rate proposal, we estimated approximately $2 million per year for capital expenditures. Over the past four years, we have been in the $3 to $4 million range per year. And these increases were related to replacing aging infrastructure as we went along and with the street improvements. Other factors: prudent financial planning assures adequate reserve levels. The credit rating agencies recommend 150 to 180 days cash on hand, which is approximately $4 million for us, and currently we're sitting at only 62 days. We also want to promote conservation. Currently, our residential rates include a declining block once you exceed 20,000 gallons. We would also like to ask to add watershed protection. This will be a new section in the rates that I will discuss more here in just a minute. We have aging water mains that we need to proactively cover those needs. We also need to meet the needs of the growing city. I know that Conway was the fastest-growing city in Arkansas in 2022. Here are some of our upcoming projects. This rate increase does not contemplate any of these projects in there. We have a water treatment plant expansion of approximately $39 million. We will use retired debt, the funds from those, to cover this project. We are in the process of getting a loan for 1.75%. Current rates that you would be able to get right now, this would save us approximately $11 million in interest expense. And this also includes $7.5 million in principal and interest forgiveness, and that project is planned for 2024. We're also looking at a new raw water line from Brewer Lake, approximately $25 to $30 million in the 25 to 26-year timeframe. And then we're also looking at long-term water supply from Greer's Ferry and a water treatment plant in the northeast area of Conway in 2030 to 2031. Watershed protection that I mentioned earlier, this includes timber thinning and controlled burning. We have property owners in the area that have agricultural operations. This could help cover land acquisition or conservation easements. Tree planting, we also have a contract with UCA to monitor water quality that has been in place since 2019. As I mentioned earlier, we've had cost increases of approximately 35% from 2019 actuals to our 2024 budget. We did note on the distribution line for 2024, that does include tank painting for $350,000. That does not occur every year. But if you were to take that out, we would still have a 40% increase from 2019 to 2024. We ran our revenue requirements analysis. You can see the revenue is up there, an increase of 6.5% to 25, 4.3% to 26. This does contemplate some increases in industrial usage over the next few years. Whenever you look at those uses of funds, the treatment, distribution, counting and collection, admin and general expenses, then you also look at our capital expenditures and debt service over the next few years. You can see our day's cash on hand does not reach that 150 to 180-day recommendation, which is why we are here this evening. With the 7% rate increase that we are proposing, again, looking at those same numbers, except with that increase going into effect April 1st, 24, you can see that that gets our day's cash on hand to 122 by the end of 24, and then we reach that 150-day mark by the end of 2025, and we maintain that for the next few years. Looking at the rate design, some key assumptions, we did not propose any changes to our classes of service. You'll still see residential, commercial, industrial, institutional. All of the rate classes will be receiving equal adjustments of 7% across the board, and we will continue to do rate indexing by consumer price index or 3%, whichever is lower. All of the components, including our customer charge and our consumption charge, will receive equal percentage adjustments. We're also proposing to remove that declining block from the residential rate class, over 20,000 gallons of use, to help promote that conservation, and then also adding that watershed protection. Moving on to the different rate classes, looking at residential. Again, 7% across each aspect there. We have the customer charge, which is a fixed charge based on the size of meter you have. And then we have the consumption charge. Again, we did have a declining block. We're proposing removing that. So with the 7% increase, that would be the $4.44, no matter how much usage you have. And looking at benchmarking, currently, if you look at our average customer who uses approximately 5,000 gallons per month, that would be a bill of about $28. With this increase, that would bump it up to $31. So you're looking at approximately a $3 increase. And again, this amount includes watershed protection fee, so for residential, that would be $1. So that's one of the $3 goes to watershed. And you can see here, looking at surrounding areas, we've got Beaver Fork, Bologna, Mayflower, Greenbrier. All of those there, you can see, are higher than our current rates. These rates came from last fall, and we are aware that several of these are considering rate increases themselves. Moving on to commercial and industrial, again, 7% on the customer charge and 7% on the consumption charge. Also for institutional, customer charge and consumption charge, 7% increase each. Multi-family rate design, again, 7%. You will notice that the customer charge here is higher. As the name suggests, that's because one meter will be for multiple customers. We have a few other miscellaneous rates. Some people have fire protection systems. We also have hydrant meters. Again, that's 7% across the board. Then the watershed protection fees. You can see that the majority of our customers will receive a $1 per month, per meter fee. So you're looking at $12 per year for our residential customers. And we, in our analysis, determined that we needed between $300,000 and $400,000 per year to manage our watershed, and this amount gets us to that level. So in conclusion, again, I would just like to stress that this rate adjustment is necessary, given the increases in our operations and maintenance expenses, our increased capital expenditures, and again, the replacement of all of our aging infrastructure to help mitigate any potential system issues. We're always planning for future water supply. We feel that that is very critical, especially if we want the city to continue to grow. So I would recommend this rate adjustment as approved by our Conway Corp. Board of Directors.
Counsel, do you have any questions, Mr. Brown? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in favor? Okay, would anyone like to speak in opposition to this rate increase? Okay, since no one else has come forward for either, we will now declare this public meeting closed, council. We'll move to the next item. I think we voted on that. Yeah, nope. Nope. Next up, we have the Economic Development Committee, and we'll start with consideration to approve. I'm sorry, Mr. Hawkins, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
That'd be fine, Mr. Mayor. If you'd like to do this, that'd be okay.
Oh, you dressed for it tonight.
Oh, okay. You know, it's not very often that Mardi Gras and Valentine's Day come back to back. I do have a Mardi Gras bead in the shape of a heart here for our folks that can see that.
I like it. Colorful.
At the hunt, long and hard, Mr. Jones, long and hard. Let's see. We are on item B1, consideration to approve waiving all the readings for the ordinances on the council agenda for tonight. I'll take a motion for waiving the readings.
So move. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve waiving all three, all, sorry, waiving all the readings for the council meeting tonight to the agenda. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's a seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item here, Mr. Mayor, is ordinance to approve the proposed water system rate adjustment for Conway Corporation that was just presented to us by Aaron. Do we have any discussion on this, first of all? Up here. We didn't have any objection?
One point, I think, and I'm not sure that he mentioned it, but that the watershed protection fee can only be used for watershed protection. It can't be used for anything else within Conway Corp.
I do have one question. Brett, this may be for you. Was it mentioned about placing a secondary supply line from Brewer Lake to Conway? Okay, I must have missed that. Okay. Oh, I know that, but it's something that the city needs to do. Okay, thank you.
Well, I just want to applaud Conway Corporation for being proactive as usual in addressing the needs of a growing community. Nothing, honestly, nothing is more important to any community than a clean, safe, dependable source of water. All you have to do is look at the news to see examples of that all around the country, building infrastructure that hasn't been maintained. There's one not very far from here in Arkansas that's having a lot of issues with that, and so if you don't take care of it, you're gonna pay a whole lot more later. So I applaud you in addressing this proactiveness.
You mentioned that Conway is the fastest-growing city and state, and that's true. In order to keep pace with that, then water has to keep pace, or we just will not grow. So, and I do applaud Conway Corporation for working side by side with our street department. I do understand a lot of this increase was because of all the street work we have going on in the city, which is gonna be ongoing for a while, so I do understand that.
This is addressing a nationwide problem. Almost monthly, you'll see some major city that's having extreme problems, some that are not far from us, not across the Mississippi River.
Some of them were fatal. Going in storms, that's all you're gonna do. People didn't have water. And then when you finally got it, it had to boil, it boiled so long. I couldn't imagine us going through that. And I'd be fortunate that you didn't have to.
You know, and along that line, I've lived here all my life, and I've never remembered having to boil water.
Well, I hate to say it, I've been longer than you, and I can't even get my bowl to boil.
I will make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, which I have as ordinance 02403.
I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance to the proposed water rate system rate adjustment for Conway Corporation. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins?
I.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
All right.
That was eight. We go to twice.
Yes, keep going, Mr. Hawkins. That passes seven to zero, and I know, I know, Mr.
Hearing aids like mine, sometimes I answer.
It's all right. I would just make sure I hadn't lost, Mr. Jones.
I know Mr. Carroll's under weather tonight. Hope he gets to feeling better.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins, just keep on moving. I gotta head myself again.
All right, very good. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to approve a private club permit for Seven Oaks Steak and Seafood, located at 1117 Oak Street. And we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance 02403.
It'll be 06, Mr. Hawkins.
And is Mr. McReynolds, are you here? Okay. Would you please come up in case the council has any questions for you, sir? I don't know that they will, but we'd like to have you up here. Tell us a little bit, just a little bit about what you guys got going.
Well, we're gonna be doing an upscale steak and seafood with a fusion with the Arkansas cuisine, some Cajun cuisine, and some southwestern bite to it. I grew up in Louisiana and New Mexico, so I was hired to come out here and get this restaurant open and try to offer a new food experience to the city of Conway.
Welcome, Conway.
Just so, a little throw in there, a little extra, we do our own, we raise our own cattle, we process our own cattle, and we'll be hand butchering it in the restaurant as well. And the seafood will be coming, with the exception of a few items from the Gulf. We're trying to keep everything local and in the United States.
Excellent. Thank you.
Do you have an anticipated opening date?
We've had several. This actually is my eighth restaurant to open. Seven or six were mine, and I've sold them all to take this job, come out here for a new challenge. However, this is my boss's first, so I'm trying to help and guide him through, make this as quick as possible. I'd like to hopefully, in the next few weeks, be opening for lunch for a soft opening to get my staff trained, and hopefully by totes like days, we're rocking and rolling and having a grand opening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, 02406. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance for the private club location of Seven Oak, of Seven Oaks Steak and Seafood at 1117 Oak Street. Any further discussion?
Y'all grade your own beef? Yes. You talking about is it USDA certified? Yes. Yes, it is. They just got their certification. We can cert, we can actually sell it worldwide now.
Y'all are pretty good, real buddy.
Well, yes, it is. Actually, I cooked for, off the record, I did a Valentine's dinner on Sunday night for somebody's anniversary, and we used our beef, and I have to say, it was really tender. But it's a limousine Angus cross beef, so it's gonna be some of the best, I guarantee you.
Excellent. Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
All right.
Passes seven to zero. Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating donation funds for the Conway Tree Board. We received $5,000. And, hey, Ms. Tucker?
Hello.
How are you?
I'm doing well. How are all of you?
Good.
Conway Corp. has donated $5,000, as they are, they typically do that annually, for the tree board for Arbor Day, and I'm asking to appropriate that money.
Good. Questions, Ms. Tucker?
I think I saw they were planning some recently.
Yes, they were. The tree board, and they're doing a giveaway. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact date, but we're doing a tree giveaway fairly quickly.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, 02407. Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance to appropriate $5,000 Conway Tree Board, to the Conway Tree Board. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
That's a seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve a lease agreement with the University of Central Arkansas for the Conway Regional Airport. And Jake, I know you're walking. There you are. You were headed this way. What can you tell us?
Yep, so this is just to allow them to go into the 40-year lease, just like our other corporate hangers out there. They're gonna be building a 100-by-100 hangar out there with their classroom. They're gonna start in March. Their airplanes are coming in, and they're gonna start their first class March 4th. I hope Brad didn't get mad, I think it's March 4th.
Like in a month?
Yep, yeah, they're rocking and rolling, so.
Wow.
I'm looking forward to it. It's a great deal. They had a ton of people interested in this program. So all this is, is just allowing them to go into the 40-year lease with the city. I know I've said this before, but after that 40 years, that hangar goes back to the city, the city property, and we can then sublease out, just like all those other hangers out there, so.
This is a tremendous partnership between University of Central Arkansas and Conway Regional, and Conway Regional, and City of Conway. Thinking Conway Regional Airport. One thing this will help us with is our move to a national airport, which changes the amount of federal funds we get.
That's right. So right now, we're.
Significantly.
Regional airport, we get around $250,000 a year from federal funding. What he's talking about is there's three requirements for that in order us to go from regional to national. One of those is the instrument flights logged. They're gonna be given an instrument class out of our airport. So that's the only thing we're lacking, and that will, should bump us up over that threshold.
Is there a certain number that have to?
It's a couple thousand a year, yes, sir. Yeah, but we're not shy from that now, but this will definitely.
Takeoffs and landings?
Yeah, it's just filed instrument.
Dr. Teague did a presentation at Rotary last week that was very informative. Perhaps we could invite him to give to this group. That program, it's, it explains a great deal about what the program and how it's operating. It looks pretty special.
Oh, it is. It's gonna be a great partnership. It is a good partnership.
It's unlike anything around, I can tell you that. It's, they looked at it, we looked at it from different perspectives, and, you know, the majority of these flight schools are four-year degree programs, and this is, you know, I would recommend these students finish college and stuff like that, and eventually the airlines will require you to have a degree at some point, so maybe to kind of finish up. But they don't have to. You can just come there and get your pilots, you can just go there and get your private. You don't have to finish. You just wanna be a pilot. Or if you're already a pilot and wanna get your instrument commercial, you can do that. So there's different avenues through this, and they really spent their time on it. Done a good job.
Go, Mark. That's what you and me can do.
Yeah, come on. That mustache blowing in the wind will be.
Let me know when you buy that.
Well, I appreciate all the work that you've done with UCA, and we appreciate UCA and state work. Back to you, council.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution. I have it as 02411, is that correct?
That is correct.
I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, approving the lease agreement with UCA as a partnership with the city of Conway. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's a seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Jake, for that. I appreciate it. Final item here, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating additional funding for the detention ponds project for the Transportation Department. Kurt, good evening.
Good evening. Okay, so this is our detention pond project that, you know, we came to you with a few months ago. The, the project is essentially complete. It was a unit price project where we pay for the actual cubic yards of excavation removed for the ponds. The good news is, we actually, the ponds are bigger than, than what we originally estimated. The bad news is, because it is a unit price project, we have to pay for that additional excavation, and that's what this additional $95,000 represents. And it was, again, just based on the original estimates that were used for the bids were lower than what the actual total earthwork amount was when the project was all said and done.
Question?
No, they worked, I know they worked good, and.
It's gonna, the ponds are gonna, I mean, particularly the one on Catherine Place, I anticipate it's gonna be a huge benefit to that community over there. They, they, you know, they've suffered through some pretty regular flooding issues, and we've still got a couple other things that we're looking at over in that area to try to, you know, provide additional relief for those folks. But these, this pond, particularly the one in Catherine Place, should, should be a huge benefit to that area.
Okay.
I know, that's where I got a lot of calls from emails from residents in that area as well. I'm very thankful. And with that, I will make a motion for adoption of this ordinance, 02408. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance for additional funding for the detention pond project for the street department, Transportation Department. I forget, we've got a new name for you guys. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
That's a seven to zero. Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next, we have Public Service Committee. We have an ordinance appropriating funds for the repair proportion of the Tucker Creek Trail north of Pompe Park. And we have Mr. Andrew Thames here to tell us about this.
Good evening, council. So this is an unfortunate one, where we've just seen some erosion along Tucker Creek, just north of Pompe and between Gatling Park as well. So right here, we're just asking to appropriate the amount of, where'd you go, $33,400. This will allow Jay's Construction to come in, put. This will allow Jay's Construction to come in, put riprap in to where it'll slow the erosion and kind of stabilize that area. And then $15,000 as an overlay, they're gonna have to drive big machinery around on the trail, and that's just the, to repair anything that gets messed up. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jay's Construction, so we worked with the Transportation Department on this one. Mr. Reynolds was able to get a hold of them. They've actually built some of our trails in the past. We, you know, hold them to a high standard, and they, they meet it every time. Conway. Oh, God, yes, sir.
I went around the curve on the trail, but that's about.
Yeah, yeah, they're from Conway. Local company, yep.
I'll make a motion for the adoption, O2409.
We have a motion, a second, to approve this ordinance for repair of a portion of the Tucker Creek Trail north of Pompey Park. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Mr. Cummins.
Yes.
Miss Isby.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. Counsel, I know you're aware of this, I don't know that everyone at home is, we signed our contract last week to get moving on the Connect Conway Trail.
Yay!
Yeah, yeah.
They connected to the swimming pool?
Yes.
Yeah, so that was, that was the biggest hurdle. Robbie and Felicia and Shawana and Jamie, they, they ran around the halls dancing. I guess it's a big thing. I do. Thank you, Andrew. Next up, we have an ordinance appropriating funds for the shade structure at Bainbridge Park for park recreation. We did this just for you, Mr. Hawkins. And Mr. Thames.
Yes, sir. So this is a fun one. We're looking to appropriate the amount of $41,470.50 to construct shade that'll cover the entire playground.
Counsel, take a look at your ordinance there in section two, correct that amount to $41,470.50, please. It did. That's a big number, isn't it?
I'll make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, O2410.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt this ordinance, appropriate funds for shade structure at Bainbridge Park, and there will be a lot of mothers and kids happy about that. Including my wife.
Bunch of people use it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Mr. Garrett.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Miss Isby.
Yes.
Mr. Cummins.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Andrew. Next up, we have Public Safety. We have Chief Harris here, ordinance appropriating fiscal year 2023 funds for the Conway Police Department.
Good evening. Hey, chief. On the first page is just the reimbursement funds for 2023. Basically, the various entities for extra duty insurance proceeds and canine vet reimbursements that we just asked the funds be allocated back into the appropriate accounts.
Make motion for the adoption of the ordinance, O2411.
I have a motion, a second, to approve this ordinance appropriating fiscal year 2023 funds to the Conway Police Department. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Miss Isby.
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Mr. Cummins.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Next, chief, you're still appropriating funds, ordinance appropriating funds for Conway Police Department.
Yes, sir. This is from this year, just funds from various extra duty that were reimbursed and asked that they go back into the appropriate account.
Make a motion for this, ordinance, O2412.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt this ordinance appropriating funds for the Conway Police Department. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes.
Ms. Mel.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Aye.
Mr. Cummins.
Yes.
Miss Isby.
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.[1688.16]